Call of the Popeye County Board of Education for Tuesday, June 17th to order. All members aren't present. Please stand if we set a flag.
I declare the name is the flag. The United States of America and the Republic. It stands one inch. Not the problem. Anything that's wrong. The liberty of justice for all.
First body movement agenda is approval of the minutes from board education meeting told on June 3rd, 2025 will have a motion. The Mr. Holmes made the motion, but I have a second. Mr. McNabb, second. Any additions or corrections or questions about the minutes from last meeting? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Motion carried. Number two, approval of the agenda. Have motion. The phone play move, have a second.
Yes.
Mr. McNabb, second. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
We need to have number 17 with the personnel under Popeye County High School employment. Here we James the Chasman has attended Popeye County High School for up to seven days for summer help with school persecution.
Remove him.
Yeah.
Any others? Anybody else? All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number three is delegations. Do we have any? If you have four sort of the planning minutes.
Thank you. I'll be very grateful. Appreciate the opportunity. Coming to tonight, I know back in the spring, there was a part-time teaching position that was eliminated at the high school. And I, as a parent, believe that there were representations made at that time that the elimination of that position would not, if you had, the kids would get deprived of academic classes. We've already been told that there's a class next year that will no longer be offered in person. There might be a a remote opportunity for it. And there's further rumor mill about that other classes will also not be available. One big issue in the State Department report that was issued in this county back last year was the fact that there was no schedule for the 2024-2025 school year that was tightly produced. We still don't have that at my school. I've got a senior next year who doesn't know what classes she can take. So, you know, for all the changes that are put, it seems like in the academic realm and in the scheduling realm and in the offering realm, we're still failing. And I'd ask you guys to try to look into that, do some kind of data.
Thanks. Thank you. Any others? Super agent report special recognition.
Talking about two members this evening, everyone this morning, always identified against Ms. Shanti Grees. So we had 864 students enrolled in Popeye County Schools. Now that is based on the 24-25 school years we have not rolled into 25-26 school years.
Eight hundred twenty-six, they are sixty-four.
People were eight. Last June, when I ran that number, we had nine hundred and sixteen students. So we're going to see fifty-two students in my county in a year's time. Hillsborough currently has enrollment of seventy-seven students. Green Bank, a hundred and ninety-six. Six through eight at Green Bank has sixty-four students in it. So that's your middle school there. The elementary has a hundred and thirty-two.
What's, so what's your table?
Eight hundred and thirty-six.
One ninety-six.
Actually, wouldn't make you all charge myself.
Sorry.
Markston Elementary has two hundred and nine. Markston Middle has a hundred and twenty-three. And our high school has two hundred and fifty. And I wanted to mention to you that we only have seventy-six graduation, graduate, graduate. At last, I guess it was at the beginning of this month. Now, next year, our rising seniors are currently just finished their life right with fifty. So we, we're going to see a drop as we go along. So every once in a while, you'll see that large class kind of go through. And we see that at elementary level. I'm trying to remember which grade it is, but we were having to, you know, screen, get more textbooks for this one particular class that's one group. But senior are going to see it changed. And speaking of scheduling, the high school, I spoke with Christine Campbell this morning about the high school schedule. After I received your email from her that she reached out, her and Kathy Brooke, the gym students, reached out to Glendale State regarding adding some more virtual school options with them with college. So Glendale did respond and said, yes, it would be no problem because they work with us. They grow your own program and they would be able to offer those courses. And there are two math courses that she's working with Glendale for. And it's suspense and college algebra. So those are the two. They have looked at all the angles for those courses as well as some others. You know, they have the students to decide what they wanted based on their path plans, what their plans were for the future, what courses they will need to graduate to go to college or trade school. Then they had the students put, you know, they put all these courses into the program, spit it out. We only had two students that were interested in safety. So that classes no longer available with only two students that were interested. And I think, I believe she didn't even talk to us to two students and, you know, it wasn't like something that they were planning to do. The two math courses that were working with Glendale for, they had, she said, about three to five students that were arrested. Some of those do not meet the criteria to be in the courses. So then that's when they looked at virtual options. So come online. So those students can actually work at the school and take their classes where Glendale State.
You mean student, women people like Mr. Harden's concern.
Right. They get, they get through Glendale State at the high school.
And Miss Cameron will still have that and be there getting that key.
Right. For, we also, if you recall, last spring, we put Mrs. Cross's class is also an option for a virtual school online. Or it's a through colleges. That way they're not, they used to be scattered all throughout the school. You know, different classes are sitting in the corner while the teacher was teaching something else. And so they're trying to make so that they have one or two classes either with this current or with this.
And that makes a huge difference pretty bad. So you can hear there, he's not teaching, she's like, right, correct. That's what he.
It's both of us on land, not sure they're beating on that. Another item of the high school, and I believe that Mr. Gibson was talking to you recorded meeting about this. We do have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow afternoon at two o'clock regarding the gym. We've had efficiency, a company come in and look at it. We were able to save some money in some areas and sharing that you'll speak to us more in detail than I am. And they've also looked at a different underlay or padding in the gym that was.
Justin Gibson talked about it last week.
Right. Yeah. So he mentioned, he said that he thought that is in his report. Anything else you want to do that he told you to listen to?
He just told them, let's say they were going to have a pre-meet or a pre-construction meeting and that they would give him exactly when they would start.
Because I thought he was one of the things I looked at, so I know that where would I re-ask? Yeah. Cause we could claim it all starting the day after students left. And here we all, yeah, she said, I think they may have a construction in constructional classes. So that is.
I understand that monthly the coaches call me from downtown and say they are, they're working out with the other schools. They might.
Correct.
Go back to, yeah. Back to the other schools.
Yes. Also, I, Mrs. Bartman and I were talking today about just vacancies that we, I just wanted to keep you up today. The assistant principal of the high school, which yet to be filled, we have reposted it just because of the small number of certified applicants. And we've got that right to repost. We have a lot of teacher openings currently in the county. One eight was a potential, two civilians, still have a counselor at Green Bank, one bus driver. And after tonight's meeting with retirements and resignations, we'll have one director position who can provision happen, one cook, and then we also have the athletic trainer and head basketball coach at high school, as well as some random summer positions that we still have. So I'd like to thank all you are for our work and keeping us all on track and making sure we have all the certifications and packages to process. And then that was all I have to say.
Thank you. Just by approval, the following consent finance, the performance, a payment funded listing of one hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and two dollars and sixteen cents. Payment of local government purchase, two cars. About dollars there, but I don't have the amount, Sherry.
Hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty cents.
Hundred and sixty-five eighty-five?
Hundred and sixty-five eight nine seven. And forty cents.
And four, okay. Hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty cents. June 3rd, 2025 employee payroll, two hundred and ninety-three thousand thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents, fifty-two cents. Bank reciliation for the month of February 2025, March 2025, April of 2025. Number eight is grant awards. F is Popeye County School Summary of Schedule of Revenue and Expenditure on a Base Basis for the Month End in May 2025 and Budget Adjustment. Do I have a motion? The Mr. Holmes made the motion, you'll have a second.
Second.
Mr. Holmes for a second. Any questions about this? Hearing none, all those in favor saying aye. Mislangue, approval of a contract between Popeye County Board of Education and Leslie Goodall Occupational Therapist Effective for August 28, 2025 through June 30, 2026, per the terms of the contract. Do I have a motion? Holmes made a move, have a second. Mrs. Holmes for a second. I do have a question about this. How come we're doing this so early? You never did this all.
Oh, since you turned about. We've had, we've had us.
Well, I'm not, I'm not questioning the point that we're doing it. I'm questioning the point of how come we're doing it so early? Because we never, this never come out on a agenda to August before. No, I didn't have to talk to you. I just wondered why we was doing it early. All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Here is number seven, approval of contract between Popeye County Schools and Diane Smith Certified School Psychologist Effective for the 25-26 school year, per the terms of contract. Do I have a motion? Holmes made a motion, you'll have a second. Holmes for a second. Any questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor saying aye. Number eight is approval of contract between Popeye County Board of Education carried Bowers Impact Learning Services to provide services for debt and part of hearing students for the 25-26 school year, per the terms of a con, of a contract. Do I have a motion? Motion, go ahead, a second. Mrs. Holmes for a second. Number eight. All those in favor saying aye. Number nine, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Popeye County Board of Education and Middle Central Western New York Action Association for the 25-26 school year, motion. Mr. Holmes, look at the second. For a second, any questions on number nine? Hearing none, all those in favor saying aye. Number 10 is approval between Popeye County Board of Education and the Education Consulting Female LLC for providing mentoring services for the new director of finance from July 1st, 2025 through June 30, 2026. Do I have a motion? Holmes made a motion, you'll have a second.
Thank you.
Mrs. Holmes for a second. My day of virtue is big. If I. This day of virtue.
They prefer, yes, Jacoby. He does.
The question I have is why wouldn't Sherry have given the opportunity to do this since she's worked with Sarah so closely? And her audit was, you was there. It was perfect.
I must be able to say that I do not know anyone who's been to a third degree. I mean, you're there for support, but actually you didn't mention it was going to be a lesson.
The, the problem I have, and I know David before, he's a friend of mine, his parents are a friend of mine. I know him well. But our job is to take care of Popeye County and to keep money in Popeye County. And that's what, you know, we're the board of education, but we're also responsible to the citizens. And that's, that's what I was thinking. And I like that, that I don't have a thing in the world with you, Sarah. In fact, you know, Sherry will tell you, I was on the board when we got him to mentor her thirteen years ago.
So why do we have?
Her husband got sick and she went to Morgantown. Nolan Urban was secret at that time. It's why, it's why she did. Now I did have questions for her and called her and she certainly talked me back. Tell me different thing. Sherry, I don't know if you ever talked to Mrs. Urban or not, did you? Yeah, well, they, they lived in Morgantown for a long time, of course. But it's up to the group, however they want, whatever you want to do. All those in favor saying aye. opposed? No. No. So carries through to. Number 11, approval to continue using travelers' insurance as a workers comp provided for the 25-26 school year at a fee of forty-one thousand, a hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Do I have a motion? Holmes made a motion, you'll have a second. Mr. McNabb, exactly. All those in favor saying aye.
Also, about now, I'm going to bring this up. I meant by the. See what it works.
It's not much.
I'm going to about six.
No, I mean, I'm on.
Oh, yes. As you all better because I want to.
We're going to keep from getting people hurt.
Yeah. That can follow.
We, we usually have people come in and call whenever I spring on about safety. And AT&amp;T, more people got hurt in their offices than they get out of their line. And they pull out a desk drawer and somebody else can fall over. I thought that was an amazing, amazing thing when it recommended. Number 12, approval of following politics, policy, policies. Policy 5410, promotions, acceleration, placement and retention. Policy 5460, 60 is graduation report. Do I have a motion? Holmes made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Holmes for the second. This is a state step if we have to go.
These are our common, common, you see.
All those in favor saying aye. Motion carried. Approval of the following for the 2025-2026 gender classification for Western Virginia Department of Education. And you all can read the boys, the girls, same co-ed. Four states.
One thing to say, all law was not reproachless. I think that they were going to have, I think we have the number two of seven successes. And they're going to come and cast for dimension of the cost. We don't do that. And this sport is the same time soccer is in our Skills USA and other fan that's on there and baseball, softball. Were there more shootings you have? If it's not something I'm referring to.
So Chas and Taylor now with the girls that were arrested, they come back. She's our now, we had twenty-five girls. We explained to them that there was no funding for any sport. Parents are going to buy them uniforms. They have two coaches that are going to come to their time. And they have asked to do all the way days that we have regular charges. I reached out to Cynthia Fable at the School Athletic Association. She said that was, it was put on their site as a sport, as a sport. Sit down, share.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. She gets, do I have a motion? That may, Mr.? Motion, I have a second.
A second.
Miss Holmes, for a second now, please. Go ahead. Mr. Gibson.
So volleyball is co-ed or is it a theme? What's the, how does it work?
Well.
Okay. So I mean, if we offer that, that we have to offer another voice sport to offset the, or do we already have that in place with? So if we offer volleyball, we have to offer another voice sport, possible volleyball.
What do you, Title IX, Sherry, do you know? I think Title IX says you have to, Ben.
Yeah. I think, I looked at it. They don't play. That's what I was like.
Here's, here's the thing, all these sports, like the girls softball and all that started out as volunteer. And then over a period of time, we end up paying the bill.
There's that many girls going, they're going to have.
It's like that, which it is.
And we cover all of that. I mean, they covered the drive, but we covered the box with a few of us. And we talked about this, they asked me in February, not many help on that, and I thought it was sad. They had twenty-three girls, sorry. She had, they're arrested.
Well, I think they have department for the boards that we didn't approve volleyball as a girls' sport.
Well, that would have been, I think that would be my fault. I was just like, okay, do we, is the girl that actually come then? Well, they wanted to just come in at the last meeting, because what's not in the gym? And so I was putting it on the gym, I was only my fault, just put it to. And so I was putting it on the agenda, so I might as well just go ahead and get all the sports approved in one swoop. Like, that's why I made the extra seat out of this.
They were raising funds at the cast parade scenes. They were raising funds for trying to get it back, they know. I know, it's not a lot of walking.
Well, you only have a way games, that's a crazy decision. You don't, you don't make the money, pay the fish. And you're a fisherman, you wouldn't get that. But you can't, you can't get any money. But that's, that's my, my daughter played and all that. There's not enough people, in my opinion, there's not enough people to show up. Plus, we're gonna, they do all the way games, that's fine, but we're still will supply a bus. Next year, we'll be paying full cost. What's other group? Well, you can't approve it until we make sure that if we, if we can. I mean, we knew your must say. Looks like, I read the title of the document, it's a big document, and it's, it takes an attorney to read it really. But it's, it looks like we've got to offer a mail thing to offset that, is what I saw. I've got emails from, from parents wanting to stop the rassle. Well, that's spring, it's the end of season, it don't matter. What I'm getting at saying that volleyball, we have to go to boys' rassle? Do we have to offer both under Title IX? Congratulations, might be there. Okay, let's do it this way, let's, let's pull volleyball out and vote on everything but volleyball. Right now, all those in favor saying by saying aye. Now, on the volleyball. We're gonna table that, uh, I have a motion to table, let's put it that way. Mr. Paul, you made a motion to table, Mr. Gibson, second. All those in favor to table, sitting by, I'm saying aye. And it is tabled till the next meeting. It has to come up on the next meeting agenda or it goes lost forever. Okay, number sixteen is approval payment of ten unused vacation days to Chrissy Grant's resignation effective June thirty, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion? Mr. Paul, make a motion, go ahead, a second. Anyway, okay, any discussion on this? Sir? Although in favor, she's about to say aye. I, I don't have a problem with it, but I just want to know how many days she's been in the office since we already knew she pregnant. But she had ten left? Hmm?
Yes.
How much, how many counts did she in the office over this tax month? But what from this office?
She works even on weekends.
I ain't gonna complain, I moved past it, so it's no, no big deal, but, you know, you gotta be in the office if you don't work. Approval of service and professional personnel, number seven. Yes, we did. Although in favor of paying Chris, we've done used vacation, we voted five oh. Number seventeen is approval of service and professional personnel, do I have a motion? Don't make a motion, go ahead, a second.
Requested transfer to be made out of Pocahontas County State of Brandon for teacher kindergarten, she teaches for first grade, effective twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Employment of Michael Scandals, custodian in three, for three day elementary, for the summer. Of two thousand thirty-five as a half day custodian in June sixteen through June thirty, from eight thirty A M to twelve P M as daily rate of pay. Pay, paid holidays are not part of this contract, retirement of Valerie. As code, as code three, according to bank elementary middle school, I don't know, effective June thirty, twenty-five, due to retirement, she will be the last. Requested transfer to Lucid Cloper from ECAT Special Education classroom bus bay. Re-Head to ECAT Special Education classroom bus bay for bus trip. Employment of Brittany Place as K five teacher for summer school, effective June sixteen through July thirty. At twenty-five dollars per hour, we need adequate staffing and student enrollment. Paid holidays are not part of this contract. Employment of Chloe Hardisty as second grade teacher at Hillsborough Elementary School, effective for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Employment of Pocahontas County High School's Stephanie Haines as custodian of Pocahontas County High School for seven days for summer help. For school preparation, scheduled to be coming by council, effective custodian. When we can, we voted it nation and first to treat it, probably director of federal department of special education, we play, we use the schools and elementary instruction and creative farm, effective June thirty, twenty-two-five. Employment of Sarah Hamilton as graduate director of finance for Pocahontas County Schools. At the statement of salary based on degree experience, effective July first, twenty-two-five, chartered by employees two hundred and sixty-one days. Employment of Jeanette Wagner as substitute for K five teacher for summer school, effective June sixteen through July thirty, twenty-two-five, at twenty-five dollars per hour, as needed, paid holidays per month. Employment of Katie Rose, substitute to K eight for summer school at Martin's Elementary, for elementary students at seventeen dollars on network. Nine to do Friday, June sixteen through July thirty, as needed. Employment of the following substitute teacher for Pocahontas County Schools, Kelly Buzzer, substitute custodian for Pocahontas County Schools this previously.
Any questions? Although in favor, she's about to say a aye. Here, Sarah, congratulations. Manager of the board, Mr. Gibson, manager of the board, I made a motion for. Don't make a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Gibson, have a second, manager of the board, Mr. Gibson.
So yesterday I had a conversation with. One of our own recently graduated students, Emma Dean. Are you, are we reaching out to these home where we people and Emma Dean?
We've been working with the state to make sure that certification and everything is in line.
She, she come along, because she, she wants, she told me she wants, she came, she went to school. Look at me, you come back here and work someday, well, I don't know where they should have been or not.
But she needs to apply therapy position, and you can see people kind of move around, like Sarah Brown, we've got, yeah, we've got her first. It's just so, she just, please, uh, right, she can go.
She, she, she needs to apply every time, every, every time. All right, okay.
They just watched the posting deadline, you got the page man, the damn reporter, deadline.
Okay, all right.
And what we did was we posted one on the website, everybody was there. So by, first they changed their new postings.
I just want to make sure we extend an avenue for this young person. The math position, I'm concerned about the math position too. You know, we had a, I think I shared with somebody in an email, um, that. This particular citizen said if we didn't have the position, she was going to mail her homeschool card and bring her kids out of school to get this done. So, you know, I wanted, I want that investigated. Mrs. Turner knows, I am so sorry that she's leaving us. That's why I don't mind, and I'd like to tell her to, I'd like to talk to her personally, that I am terribly sorry that she's leaving and resigned. It makes me sad. And, um, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Gibson, Mr. Paul.
I want to touch on the math position too, because. To me, we need sixty-two to justify a teacher, that's ten per period, sixty periods of everything. And a teacher's only cost a whole lot more. We have to have fifteen parents for the students, I think, take funding to come close to what we'd be paying for a teacher. And I'm all about education, and I'm all about kids getting everything they need. But I just feel like if the part of sector of Pocahontas County, it feels that it's their children and they deserve the top classes, the high level stuff. And all the rest of these kids, it doesn't matter. And we're the place in our budget where every teacher has to handle, the work we have, we look at the whole picture. We can't pick and choose for our, because that's the same as volleyball. We get volleyball forever. And all those girls, I said, ooh, this one, they play, that's everything they do. And that's important, but can we afford it, that's what we look at. Especially with the state, but for the same state, but they are, it's, we live in red. I'm going to argue with.
Well, it's not like we're denying them access to those math classes. We're just giving them a different way to get them.
Well, I guess if miraculously we had a bunch of kids signing up for it. Now, we did terminate the position with the caveat that we could bring it back if necessary, right? We would do that.
And we lost four kids at high school from last year to this year.
Well, I know, we. When we, when we, when we turned, did that in spring, we voted that out, we said, if we necessarily can bring it back.
And then they offered anything, they roll it, they don't need them.
Well, it's a mistake with that college class, we need to care, states, you did our math program. Instead, we don't need another teacher. And we're talking about five kids.
Even some of those do not meet the requirements, we could have scored a kid to this point.
So, that's, that's, we're talking about all day, all day.
That's, then what, even kids, but.
That's teaching, everybody say three.
And what's true is so, we need. People than sixty thousand dollars for a teacher.
I'm gonna, we, we got an office, there's something, it's something, and, and it's a schedule down, we, but we got, right now, we have three history teachers, we have three science teacher, and we have three math. Yes, yes, so why would we need four math? I'm just, well, now, if we do, we, we, we got to vote one, but I just don't. For, for that many students a day, we can't justify the price. Uh, what did you get, Miss Paul, for?
Wish you can pass.
One thing I'd like to clarify is. Do the, 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 the high school have a schedule? Mr. Horst, he stood up there and said, we do not, a high school last being, we can't. So I, we did, we did this stuff. That we, we do have a schedule at the high school. I, I was confirmed that by, by Ms. Campbell and Ms. Griffin. I want to see if you're watching this or whatever, you're getting fed some wrong information somewhere. So, uh, the other thing that I would, that I would like to bring up, I'd like to make a motion that this board, uh, have the, make the approval of the hiring money that's in the, uh. Administrative position. Any kind of administrative position that we have to approve.
Do you want that for only agenda information? Oh, although. Because we're going to hire a special education person, we're going to hire a system, physical high school, being recruited, so it's administration.
I was hoping we gave it to them, what?
I'll even, you put that on the agenda for the next meeting, please.
Anything else? I think that's all I would.
Oh, I got one question, Chloe Hardisty, and I'm glad Chloe's coming back, Pocahontas County, but she's a girl winger. How many kids in the second grade in Hillford? I am hearing out of, out of that area down there, probably three or four of these kids is gonna be homeschooled, have you heard that?
Yes.
Have you heard that?
No, 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 six out of the.
But I, I, I heard that it's gonna be at least two out of the, uh, out of the second grade. That's all, I, I, I don't have a problem with her, I don't have no problem at all with Ms. Hardisty, not at all, I think she's great that she's coming back to county. But, you know, we used to put on all these agendas, if enough children apply. You know, maybe we should start doing that again. Because can we move her around if need be? Since we hired a second grade teacher? That's what I think, like, I personally think it was in the second. It was in me, because we used to put it out on sports, we keep putting on everything, if, if, if students apply enough. Yes, and we, yeah, and it should be for, especially if you're gonna have less than five.
Those are, it's small, yes. And Irish, in a class, but we can't send them monthly.
Oh, no, oh, no.
I mean, but look, listen to the numbers. They are full and overflowing. The solution would be that we need to look at boundaries.
With the reverse of us, that are for rounding, starting from zero, in for rounding, if you want to.
But Southern District, that's Southern District, we may have to look into something like this. Uh, because, and, and I am so proud of Chloe, I've known Chloe ever since she was a little girl, and I'm so proud of her to come back to Pocahontas County. With her mom and grandma. You know, but, well, we got to watch our budget, we don't want to go up to the other county, so we got to be very careful about how we do that. But let's kiss everybody, huh? And I'm, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Ball, if in our, in our community in schools, Mrs. Ball, on levels. Can they not go out into the community and say, hey, you know, we got a great school down here in Hillford, do you want to stop homeschooling, go to our school? You'll be around other kids, do we have anybody that does that? But after that initial visit, did we ever come back to them and say, hey, look, you know, we only got five kids in this class, you're gonna be like, you're, you know, this, this is what a product's for.
So ask the principals, we can school year, gave them their list of school students, and ask them to contact the child person.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I, I will keep up the numbers very good, don't we have ninety-one kids that's either virtually or homeschool in Pocahontas County? Over a hundred. Well, there's several reasons that gets you.
Interesting to know how many of the schools.
And Hill the state comes up, so they cast those stuff, you know, you can sign a, you can sign a. Okay, our next board meeting, education meeting will be held on Tuesday, July the first, two thousand twenty-five, beginning at six. P M at the Board of Education conference room. Do I have a, the, Paul made a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Gibson, have a second, although in favor, she's about to say aye. Mr. Gibson, second, all those in favor, simply by saying aye. We are hereby adjourned.